2024 Scott County Board of Commissioners, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Before we get started, I'm just going to make a brief remark with last Saturday's events, so if you will indulge me. Can't help but hope and pray that this past Saturday's assassination attempt serves as a watershed moment, a moment in time though with a walk us back from the brink that feels so, so close, so much anger, so much hate, a house divided it cannot stand. It's sad that it takes loss of life, loss of life and tragedy to bring it to a common forefront of our lives, but here we are. It feels like we need something so much bigger, a unifying spirit that reminds us that we have more in common than that which divides. I was heartened to hear and read from all of our political delegations, both red and blue, ask for and commit to prayer. So to that end, I would like to pray a prayer that you can join in with, or pray on your own, or not pray at all, all your choice. So if you'd just join me for a moment, or not. Dear Lord, let's pray that we would humble ourselves and seek your face so that our great land may be healed. I pray your mercy and grace and peace would flood this place and also flow in extra measure to those families that were killed or injured. Lord, please forgive us, restore us, bless us, in Jesus's name, amen. Thank you. I'd also like to open it up if there's any other comments or not.
I'll make a comment. You know, everybody is saying we need to dial back the rhetoric, the hateful rhetoric of these times. I agree with that. And I think of my own political history. When I was in my late teens, early college, I was often kind of demonizing the other side or the somebody had a different political perspective than I did. And, you know, that was wrong. You know, that was not the right kind of attitude to have. There's reasons why people legitimately think differently than maybe I or you do, you know, and people hold different perspectives, differing opinions, and that's okay. That's the way it is in society. And I guess we should kind of honor the differences and think that that's pretty great, we can express them without hate. And so when we say "we" need to dial it back, I think we need to put including me. Continuation of that, including me, you know, including each of us, you know. That's all I have to say.
Well said, well said. Anyone else? Before we move on, I should also mention that our fearless leader is working tirelessly on all of our behalf down at the NACO convention in Tampa, Florida, where here it's, I mean, Florida in July, hot, sweating, humid, sticky, and that's in the sessions, in their air conditioning. So she's trying to get the work, good work done for us at the county. So thank you, Commissioner Chair Bart Weckman-Brecke. So, all right, moving on to item number three, are there any amendments to the agenda? I did not see any, so move forward past that. Number four, we'll look for approval of the minutes that were distributed. Any changes, edits?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of those minutes.
Take it. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Now, number five, we will move to the recognition of interested citizens, limited to items not on the agenda, five minutes per person. So please avail yourself to the podium if you would like. Buy your room. So we'll move on to number six, the consent agenda. These will pass in one motion, so I'll just read through these. Item 6.1, adopt resolution number 2024-175, authorizing entering into a cooperative agreement with the city of Credit River for turn lane improvements on County Highway 91. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2024-183, authorizing entering superseding fiber master agreements and attachments and authorizing county administrator execution of fiber agreements. 6.3, adopt resolution number 2024-186, authorizing entering an amendment into the agreement with Alliance Engineering, Inc., for County Highway 16 project. 6.4, adopt resolution number 2024-192, authorizing application for a mobile mental health crisis grant, and if awarded, accepting the grant and entering into an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Human Services. 6.5, adopt resolution number 2024-193, authorizing a budget amendment and entering into an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., for trust analysis on the Holmes Street Bridge in Shakopee, which is now open as of a week or so ago. 6.6, adopt resolution number 2024-195, authorizing entering into agreement with Bolton and Mink, Inc., for consultant services for the county highways 23 and 68 roundabout. 6.7, adopt resolution number 2024-197, approving one full-time equivalent systems support technician for IT. 6.8, adopt resolution number 2024-198, authorizing application for a smart reentry housing demonstration program grant, and if awarded, accepting the grant and entering into an agreement with the Bureau of Justice Assistance. 6.9, adopt resolution number 2024-200, authorizing entering into a contract with Core Mechanical Services LLC for the law enforcement center plumbing project and amending the capital improvement plan budget. 6.10, adopt resolution number 2024-201, authorizing amendment number two to the Minnesota Department of Human Services grant number 233717 to receive additional funds and approving a budget amendment. 6.11, approve the one-day to four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the parish of Saints Joakim and Anne in Louisville Township. 6.12, approve the renewal application for optional 2:00 AM liquor license for SSK Group LLC DBA Dority's Tavern located in Spring Lake Township for 2024 through 2025. 6.13, approve record of disbursements and approved claims. 6.14, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. Those are the 14 items on consent. Colleagues?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda is approved. Now, moving on to item number seven, presentation of the Morris S. Miller Outstanding Service Award. The sheriff is making his move in a good way. Take it away.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to read the nomination here and kind of announce what we're doing, then we're done. If Commissioner Beer, if you want to come up, will present the awards to the individuals that are present. It's a large, large audience today and a lot of people participate in this call. So I'll just read through this to kind of highlight what happened that day and who was involved. So today, we gathered to honor the heroes among us, individuals who quick thinking and selfish actions saved a life during a traumatic incident. The Morris S. Miller Outstanding Service Award recognizes individuals who exhibit exceptional courage, decisiveness, and swift action during emergencies. Established in 2002, this award honors Morris S. Miller, a high-respected figure in the emergency medical services field, known for his dedicated work in prehospital care in Scott County and throughout the metro area. On April 10th, 2024, dispatcher Victoria Jones and dispatch supervisor Ashley Somas handled the 911 call that came in about an individual experiencing chest pain and difficulty breathing at a residence in Helena Township. Somas and Jones provided lifesaving instructions while providing... I lost my spot. While dispatching first responders to scene and connecting the caller with medical professionals over the phone, Sheriff Sergeant Ken DeVojac and deputies Ted Kess and Paul Fordice joined New Prague police officers Josh Walton and Emily Eastman, as well as New Prague firefighters Lieutenant Brandon Anderson and firefighter Ryan Schmitz, who are already on the scene administering aid. Mr. John Ruling, who was initially alert at the time of the call, lost consciousness shortly thereafter, and Sergeant DeVojac, Deputy Kess, and Deputy Fordice immediately began CPR, while paramedics Jade Adams and Polly Greer provided aid as Mr. Ruling went in and out of consciousness. Firefighter Schmidt and Lieutenant Anderson, along with officers Walton and Eastman, continued ride CPR. Lifelink ambulance, Lifelink air ambulance helicopters requested, and the firefighters and deputies and officers worked to establish a landing zone. Pilot Michael Lewis, along with firefighter, paramedic Alex Wilcox, and flight nurse Kevin Rixman transported Mr. Ruling to Abbott Hospital. Stafford advised that Mr. Ruling had a mitochondrial infraction, most commonly referred to as a widowmaker heart attack. Their quick and effective responses called for service clearly saved his life. The following awards are presented for their actions during this medical incident. Under the Morris S. Miller Outstanding Service Award nominees, from Scott County Sheriff's Office, we have Sergeant DeVojac, deputies Ted Kess, Paul Fordice, 911 dispatch supervisor Ashley Somas, 911 dispatcher Victoria Jones, from Lifelink 3 air ambulance pilot Michael Lewis, flight paramedic Alex Wilcox, flight nurse Kevin Rixman, New Prague Police Department officers Josh Walton and Emily Eastman, Northmore Hill ambulance, paramedic Jade Adams, and EMT Polly Greer, New Prague Fire Department Lieutenant Brandon Anderson, and firefighter Ryan Schmitz. The reason for this award nomination, the emergency responders who handled Mr. Ruling's medical emergencies displayed not only their outstanding skill set, but also their ability to work as a team across numerous different disciplines. Here we have law enforcement, fire service, and medical first responders all coming together to save a life. Today, we honor their outstanding service and express our gratitude to their exemplary actions. Thank you. I'll remember the mic. All right, deputy Ted Kess.
Maybe Dave, you should be on the right.
Deputy Paul Fordice. Dispatcher Victoria Jones. Dispatch supervisor Ashley Somas. Michael Lewis. Alec Wilcox. Kevin Rixman. Josh Walton. Jade Adams. Polly Greer. Brandon Anderson. And Ryan Schmitz. And Mr. Ruling, if you want to step up too for a photo.
Well, I'm John Ruling, as you know, I guess. And I'm not usually a guy for too many words, but all I can say is that what happened to me, and I was, from what I've seen, and I'm just amazed at the cooperation everyone did to get me this far. I was just overwhelmed, and my whole family was overwhelmed with all the coordination between all the groups that worked together to get me, because everybody said, when I heard that too, my one son said, yeah, that you had the heart attack to call it the widowmaker. They say very few outcomes come to that I, that they're standing here yet I am, like I am today. So I guess, all I can say is the biggest thank you to all of you. I'd like to hug everybody. I'm not, I don't want it emotional up here, but I'm still here, and I guess there's a reason I must be here for something I need to do yet in my life. And I'm really grateful to each and every one of you that's here and not here, who couldn't be here today. And thank you all very much. The coordinated effort was unbelievable, that you all worked together so well, as much as I remembered of it. So, but for me, it didn't seem like it was that long a time till I woke up in hospital, and they said they put two stents, and I was very lucky to be here. So, thank you all very much. Like I said, I'd like to give everybody a hug for what you've done, and just, the training, all that you had, and that you could all work together, that many people, was amazing, I feel like. So, I believe in it, thank you very much, and I owe my life to all of you, everyone who came, everyone who did whatever you did, anything you did. So, like I said, it was, it was, it's beyond my words anymore. So, thank you all, from the bottom of my heart, thank you all. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. It's great to see you upright. Good, 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 good.
We'll take any comments or questions from the board, and then after that, we can all, family, we can head to the room across the hallway, we can take some photos and have a moment to celebrate.
Colleagues? Yeah, just what a great picture it is of many jurisdictions coming together for a common goal, and boom, love it. So, nice work, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, yeah, you guys get to go to a little reception, and we're going to keep grinding away here, in a good way. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to move on to item eight and receive information on Scott County delivers topic, Public Health Mandated Services. We'll wait a second for the room to, yeah, look at this, look at this, you thought, yeah. Now, the cameras don't point this way, so we'll say it's still very full, it's maybe not as full. So we're going to wait for the parties to assemble, and we will be on this topic momentarily. Always fun stories to celebrate. We're almost there. We're almost there. Here we go, maybe? Or we could maybe kick it off with some introductions?
Good morning, Mr. Vice Chair, good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we are joined by a collection of people who are going to talk to you about a part of public health that we all, like, heard a little bit about during the pandemic, but who do this work day in and day out on infectious diseases. And the work that we're going to talk about today focuses on the health of individual people, but also potential safety concerns for our community. And so I think we have a really good panel pulled together, people who can talk to you about a piece of their work we don't often talk about. What I'd like to do today is ask the people, the facilitators, to introduce themselves, and then we'll move on to the panel and ask you to introduce yourself, and then we'll get going with questions.
Good morning, I'm Lisa Fries, and I'm the Transportation Services Director.
Tony Winnicky, County Highway Engineer.
Paula Gustafson, Business Relationship Manager in the Transformation and Enterprise Services Division.
My name is Ben Troop, I work with Environmental Services, I kind of coordinate well water testing, the county.
Maria Mays-Morey, Public Healthers.
Lisa Brodsky, Public Health Director.
Cynthia Smith, Drac City of Belle Plaine, Community Development Director.
Stacy Ward, I'm a public health nurse.
Jody Laris, I'm the supervisor of the public health, disease prevention and control. And then Michael will be joining us, he has to do our video DOTs this morning, so.
All right, I'm going to start with the first question. I wonder, Lisa, if you could just take a brief moment and just talk about tuberculosis and the protocol for tuberculosis treatment that would be in reference to page eight, just to sort of set the stage for what that requires.
Certainly, so, and actually, Jody could probably speak a little bit more to this, but every TB client that has active TB requires a personal visit, it's called direct observed therapy, and we see each client daily, it is a requirement, we have to watch them take their medication, we interview them to see if they're having any reactions to the medication, we make sure that they're seeking their treatment, and we coordinate that treatment as well. Previously, about five years ago, most of those were being done in person, so we would drive all over the county, and we would do in-person visits. We have shifted our model to where we have to see them at least once a week in person, and the rest are done video if they have those capabilities. In some cases, we can't, but for the most part, about 90-ish percent of our visits are done virtually, which increases our efficiency and saves the county money.
Great, thank you for that. So if someone could just speak to, on page eight, we, you have a chart that shows the percent of current patients with TB who are compliant with treatment. So what does it mean to be compliant with treatment?
So, to be compliant with treatment means that they're taking their medicine every day, like they're supposed to, as it's been prescribed. I just want to make comment that you can cross off the seven and turn it to eight and likely nine. We just had one come in yesterday with active TB, and it has a one-year-old in the household, so that means there's likely to be treatment for the one-year-old as they're going through the determination if the baby is infected or not.
So, can I just, just to just be really clear, so this is a highly infectious disease, so being in compliance with treatment, is that like they miss one treatment and they're, or how does that work?
Yeah, no, no, to be noncompliant would mean to be refusing their meds consistently.
Okay.
And truthfully, it's not something you can refuse. If someone were to say, nope, I'm not going to do that, we can then invoke the public health threat law, and we can hospitalized them and treat them. So, it's not something that really you can refuse treatment.
So if someone does refuse treatment, they can be involuntary placed in a hospital?
Yep.
Thank you.
And we haven't had to do that.
No.
Yet.
Ever?
Ever, we have come close, but we haven't had to do that, and the Commissioner of Health would be the person that would declare and put them in isolation.
Okay, thank you.
And, you know, I want to speak a little bit when you asked about the treatment of, so the DOT, the direct observed therapy is certainly a big part of the treatment, but we're involved with the whole case management part of, you know, we get the information from the Department of Health that there's someone that has TB. So, you know, that starts us with, okay, you know, are they home, are they, you know, do we need to get them into a clinic? We may have to schedule them an appointment at their own, well, typically an infectious disease clinic, sometimes we can get them in at Headland County Public Health Clinic for their TB workup, and then prescribe meds. Treatment is a very well-planned out plan of four different drugs that we start them on. Typically, they take those four drugs until we find out if the TB bacteria is sensitive to them, and if they are, then we can eliminate one, and then after 60 days, we eliminate a second one. We get sputums, if they're smear positive, then we're collecting sputums and getting them down to the clinic to get those tested. They have to do a sputum sample once a week until the first one, until it comes back negative, then we collect two more that week in order for them to come off isolation. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that is involved with the treatment of someone with TB beyond the directly observed therapy.
Sure, thank you.
They are usually with us also, this isn't a short thing, it's six to nine months, and it could go up to a year or two, but typically, it's six to nine months where they see us or communicate with us daily.
All right, thank you. Next question?
I would like to ask some questions around the public nuisance ordinance. I know that we passed the ordinance here in Scott County in 2020, and it looks like there's been a significant increase on page 13 in the data since then, and maybe talk about how this has been a positive tool, what it's enabled you to do that maybe previously in the past we're not able to do.
Certainly, I can start that one. So prior to us actually having an ordinance, we were still mandated by the Minnesota statute 145A to respond. However, we did not have the tools in place in order to effectively respond or even work with the cities. So the cities were on their own, the county was on their own. The nuisance ordinance did enable us, it put some very specific things in place, we worked with Judy Anderson, created some, some very good language in our ordinance that allows us to go into the home, declare public health nuisance, and tell them that they have 10 days to clean up. This also enabled us to work closely with the city, we do have a city partner here from Belle Plaine, and we've worked on several nuisances since, since we have the ordinance in place, and maybe Cynthia, you can speak to how well that's going. But one of the things that, you know, at that time, we only had three, four nuisances per year. We have seen a dramatic increases in public health nuisances, and I believe that COVID probably brought a lot of those to light, as well as some education, and plus, now the cities have the ability to reach out to us, and we have been able to work together to clean up several nuisances that either were, that we knew about, that we couldn't do anything about, or that have been now brought to our attention because the city now has this tool. And I'm going to turn it over to you. And I'm going to turn it over to you to maybe talk a little bit.
Yes, Cynthia, City of Belle Plaine. I met Jody and Lisa when we were working on the nuisance ordinance, which was welcomed by our community. Our entry to public nuisance is usually via code enforcement. City of Belle Plaine has a reactive, not a proactive, approach to code enforcement, so we need a complaint to actually investigate whether or not there is a code violation, in this case, a nuisance violation. Typically, the entry point for these types of nuisances are either a neighbor, a concerned family member, a person who is a first responder, or it's we're on a rental inspection and we find an apartment. Most of the time, it's related to hoarding and garbage houses. So it is a concern, obviously, for the person who lives there. It's also a concern for our building official because sometimes we have a lot of items that are piled up, and it interferes with the structural integrity of the building. So that's a concern. Also, our first responders, especially our firefighters, if there's a lot of narrow passageways or flammable material or combustible material, fires don't act like they typically do. So we have fires that burn faster, and we have no way of knowing, you know, how to navigate the interior of the building. So that is a direct impact on the neighbors as well. So for us, it's really important, we find that we are most successful when we have a team approach, when we can work with the individual, when we can work with the family, when we can provide resources. When we can't deal with this locally, we're going to reach out to either Jody or Lisa, and we're going to ask for assistance because you bring a total new set of tools to help us try to help remedy this situation. This is a real issue. I would say we deal with probably 10 situations a year, and they don't always turn out successful. Unfortunately, we had one individual that we were unable to help. So it is real. We certainly appreciate the teamwork, and I appreciate the resource, and we are doing good work here.
Thank you, Cynthia.
And I'll follow up. Typically, it's been very cooperative. When we've gone in, we've offered resources, it's gotten cleaned up. We have had, in two occasions, not in Belle Plaine, we've had to order a cleanup where we had to step in, but that is not the norm. We have been doing very well on the cleanup piece and remediating the nuisances. I think where we're falling short still, well, one of the things is we don't have any staff to do nuisances, so you have your public health director and a supervisor going out and, you know, checking how many different types of cockroaches there are in homes. I mean, these are, it's part of the job. But we're doing well on getting it cleaned up. However, in most of the cases, and when we go, we go on a team, I'm kind of the enforcer, and Jody's the public health nurse bringing resources. Cleanup resources have been well accepted. It's that mental health component for hoarding that we really haven't had anybody going, yes, I have a mental health issue, I need, I need help. So we continue to monitor some of those houses. It's chances are, we're going to have to go back because typically, there's an underlying mental health condition that is causing the hoarding issue, and they're just not ready for help yet. They've cleaned up because they've had to, or we've cleaned it up for them. Unfortunately, in some cases, we may cause further trauma, but if it's impacting the neighborhood, there really is no give and take there, especially if there's other sanitation issues that are causing additional problems on top of the hoarding. But there was a suggestion, and I think for future steps, we may look at maybe doing a coordinated response kind of model, bringing mental health with us, and hopefully, we can remediate a little bit better on the mental health component. What isn't reflected here, these are just cases that we have responded to, that we take many, many phone calls throughout the year and just provide instructions or information and connect them with resources on the phone. So these are just the cases that we've actually go out and actually physically have to do something.
Cynthia, I was just kind of wondering, since you mentioned you have approximately 10 cases a year that are nuisance-related, do you always escalate them up to public health, or is there a threshold that you work with where it gets escalated? And maybe you could speak to that a little bit more?
That's a great question, Lisa, and I think the answer is our process is likely evolving. It really is. We work as a team in code enforcement and with our police department to try to identify who may be able to best reason with the individuals involved. Sometimes if they're apartments, it's relatively easy because you have an apartment manager or property owner that has an interest in having the apartment cleaned up as well. We probably spend at least 60 days locally trying to remedy situations. If we get absolutely no cooperation, our goal is always progress, not perfection, perfection. We get absolutely no cooperation, or we feel that the life of the individual who is in the garbage house is in imminent danger, we are reaching out to Lisa and Jody immediately.
What's the crossover on these cases with adult protection and with child protection? Some, many?
Some. You know, it's hard to say. I think the one cockroach one that you had, Lisa, there was, there were children somewhere in there involved. Adult protection, it's a little harder because, you know, they have to meet the criteria of a vulnerable adult to be considered in adult protection. So we oftentimes have gone out with adult protection. Maybe they get the report first, or maybe we get the report first, but we go out together to talk with them. They can then assess, is this a vulnerable adult situation? And we can assess what's going on, and, you know, is it a public health threat? And so we are able to work together in that way.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's, there's some vulnerable adults, some not.
And I would say most of the hoarding case, like in the grand picture, I would say about 25 to 35% of our cases involve APS or CPS. Most of the hoarding, like we're seeing them most with the hoarding cases, especially the extreme hoarding.
Thank you.
All right, let's bring Ben into the fold here. So on page 12, the water test totals per year. Can you talk a little bit about what this figure is showing us? Are there any trends? And levels are high? What do we do to help out? Or any sort of mitigation?
So the graph is just kind of depicting every test that we sell per year. You'll see that on, in 2019 and 2023, we have a lot more. That is probably due to we send out a flyer to all the private well users in the county. And just a reminder that this is something that was probably in your best interest. It's not a requirement, but as you can see, we get a pretty good turnout, people that want to know what's in their drinking water. I guess.
Tony, can I, can I ask a follow-up to that?
Yeah.
So Ben, how worried should people be about the quality of water as it relates to lead?
Well, as it relates to lead, not, not too much. The Department of Health, we work with them a lot, trying to like just investigate why there's high lead in some houses and some not. A lot of the time, it's older homes, it's the plumbing inside the pipes. It almost, it's very rare that there's lead coming out of the groundwater.
Okay.
It's almost always either public utility, it's like kind of an ongoing investigation on why there's high lead. But I guess this, 2023 compared to 2022, there's more, we found more houses with high, well, high lead. High lead is, I don't know if that's the right way to say it just because any lead is above the standard. The standard is zero.
Okay.
So we had more, just because the volume of tests was so much more.
Okay.
So.
All right, thank you.
Can I just also clarify? Prior to 2011, we would, I mean, we respond to lead cases, and prior to 2011, that threshold wasn't zero, it was 10 micrograms of lead per deciliter. And in 2011, they changed that, and that's for children under six, because we know that lead impacts brain development, and it impacts children's ability to learn. So the cutoff used to be 10, so we would have an actionable item at 10. In 2011, they cut that in half to five micrograms per deciliter, and I believe it was last year, MDH changed it once again to match what the CDC's recommendation was of 3.5. So it's, it's not, again, zero, but if you can look on page 11, you can see the impact of that for us is it's every time they change it, it's increased the number of cases. It doubled our number of cases, more than doubled our number of cases. We usually had four, about four a year, three a year. Last year, we had 11 cases. And I believe this is attributed to the reducing of the actionable lead. So right now, we're responding to anything above 3.5. None of our, most of our lead cases, or none of our lead cases actually have been connected to water. It's been mostly lead paint. We've had some related to some spices that have been brought overseas that contained lead, and.
Some, most, we don't ever find out what the true source is. You know, MDH will go out with us, if it's a higher level, and do testing at the home, and, you know, they don't always find something that tests positive for lead. So then it could be, you know, the parents bringing things in. I remember the last county that I worked at, we had a dad that worked at a battery factory, and he was, he actually was the source. It was on his clothes when he would come home from work and the kids would hug him. And so that was where they were getting the lead. So it, unfortunately, we don't usually find a definitive thing, but we did find the lead in some spices that had been brought over. And apparently, it makes the color more brilliant of the spices, and it makes it heavier, so it costs more. And so, but yeah, that's what we have found. Michael, any other, any other ones that we were definitive on?
Not that I remember. A lot of them were just kind of, yeah, couldn't figure out where the source was. But then as we do testing, they do Venus draws, it gets lower.
Yep.
Yes, we have a question.
Chair, can I ask a question? Recently, there's been a lot of conversations regarding PFOS and PFOS testing in water. Is that something that we're doing at the, are we doing?
Well, we don't offer any PFOS testing. All that's been done would be through the Department of Health.
Good morning. I want to walk back to your narrative a little bit because of a lot of conversations in here that support the data that we're seeing in the graphs. And I did, on page two and on page four, I just want to reference that you talk about a framework that leaves out your minimum set of disease prevention, and that that framework is being edited or revised as we speak. And then also on page four, apologize for the page wrestling here. Because of current caseloads and vacancies, we're unable to focus on prevention work and developed and implemented a continuity of operations plan to focus on the most critical tasks. Can you talk about, if you, if you could influence the draft of the minimum requirements for prevention, and also the increased caseloads that you've been seeing? How would you like to influence what you've been experiencing in terms of public health, in terms of the activities that you need to provide, and the caseloads continuing to go up, and how you can predict and manage those caseloads?
A lot of questions in there.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So our framework really is looking at, you know, what is dividing up, because we're very closely with the Department of Health and local public health, and what's everybody's responsibilities? It'd be great to be able to say, well, you know, MDH, we really can't do this, you just do it. And that's not the way it works. I mean, it's a local public health responsibility. And so MDH has their responsibilities, we have our responsibilities. We help, you know, like right now, because of our staffing situation, MDH is like, okay, you know, we know that this is going to be another contact investigation, just let us know what we can do for you to support you. But they can't do the work. And that's our, that's our job, especially in TB. That's the one that's very specific. That's a local public health responsibility. They're doing our pertussis, they're doing our measles if we would have one, but, and varicella. But TB, that's local. And that's a good thing, because really, we're the ones that are dealing with the family. We're the ones that are establishing the trust with the family. And it, it takes a lot of trust to be able to go to someone and say, who all have you been talking to lately? Who's been in your home? Where have you been traveling to? What, you know? And it's a struggle sometimes, because some of our families are very concerned about their privacy and don't like to share that. So the thought process in some of this, whose responsibilities is whose, is looking at who's going to have the relationship with the family to be able to do the best job at the case investigation. And typically, it's local public health, because we're here. So that's kind of the framework part of that question. What else?
Well, and we did have input in the framework, so when it came out in draft form, and I also sit on the Environmental Health Community Improvement Board, so there was some opportunities for us to weigh in. The bottom line is that these are local public health responsibilities. MDH is currently helping us with our pertussis investigations until they can't. And right now, there's measles in Minnesota and a pertussis outbreak, so at some point, they may say, I'm sorry, it has exceeded our ability, and it's back to you, local public health. That's part of the problem. I mean, how do you, we can't in a year or in a day, I mean, on Friday, this, the numbers on here were obsolete as of Friday because we got two more pertussis cases. We have to respond whether we have 10 pertussis, or TB cases, 10 TB cases, or 100 TB cases. It's like the refugees. Normally, we get four to seven a year. We had almost 87 last year, 100 the year before, and we haven't changed our staffing model. So what do we need to do in order, again, we can't predict it. So what, what happens when all of a sudden, like in May and June, we got 51 new refugees? That's like a number that is astronomical for us. And actually, for Scott County, per capita, we've had the lion's share of refugees. If you look at the state map, we're like in the darker color. We've gotten a lot of the refugees in Scott County for various reasons. We have a lot of refugees coming from the Ukraine. They're coming here because their family's here, or the Baptist church is here, and the refugee settlement is matching them to where they want to go. This causes a huge surge in our cases. So we have implemented some things in order to meet that need. What has helped is VDOT going 90% virtual, so that is increased efficiency, freeing up our staff. We have used an intermittent staff person to do a lot of our refugee health assessments. We found her during COVID, and we've kept her because she was fantastic. And we would not be able to do that work without, without Marie. And I'll let you speak to some of the work that you've been doing in a minute. The other pieces we've been doing more recently is we have implemented a partial continuity of operations. We are pulling back on some of our non-essential services because always, life, safety, and health of the community comes first, prevention activities is later. So we have, we're only going to the Jaffa in person once a week. We are not currently completing full early childhood screenings because that takes a nurse. We, MDH is doing our pertussis, as we've mentioned, and we are going to start having conversations if we should start canceling our Health Matters Clinic or in person, and just going to our model that we were using during COVID, where we're just doing essential prescription refills. We're also pulling our Childling Team Checkup Coordinator because that's prevention work, and we're moving her over to do some of the TB work. Again, prevention will fall behind. We're still going to do our vaccinations because that's one of the problems that we're seeing right now that's causing the pertussis outbreak. And we talked a little bit about this during our Community Health Board meeting, is our vaccination rate has dropped below 90%. MMR is at 85, 86.5%, or 86.4%. It's the lowest we've seen in a long, long time. These specific things are leading directly to these outbreaks, pertussis, and we also have a measles outbreak. So focusing on life, safety, health, and moving staff where we need to move them. Unfortunately, we have, you know, VDOT this morning, and that would take a little bit of presence over this, unfortunately, and Michael was a little bit late, but it was because he was conducting an essential service. Did that answer all parts of that question?
That was the theme. Yeah, very good.
So I'll follow up on that, and I see on the screen I popped page 12.
So I'll follow up on that, and I see on the screen, I popped page six. So it ties into that again, and this is the percentage of children immunized by entrance into kindergarten. So I think you're hitting on that. So, you know, how do, what are the steps to get this back to those target goals? Is the decrease last few years from COVID, education, refugees you hit on, you know, what are some factors? And what are the next, what are steps moving forward to get back to trend to those target goals?
You know, I think it's a very complicated thing. All of those things are part of it. I think COVID didn't help us with the whole vaccine thing. So people have then moved, I'm not going to get the COVID vaccine, to I'm not going to get my kids vaccinated. So I think we've had to deal with some of that. So really working with outreach. Clinics are very involved, you know, talking with their own patients and because, again, you want, you want the trusted relationship to be the one that's providing the information. So providers in the clinics are talking with their families about immunization and trying to give good, sound immunization information. You know, we certainly work with our families, our refugee families, all of the families that we come in contact with about immunizations. WIC talks about immunizations. CTC talks about immunizations. So we're covering all of that. We do our immunization clinic. So we have two funding sources for immunizations. So we have the Minnesota Vaccine for Children, and that allows us to vaccinate any child that is uninsured, underinsured, meaning that for whatever reason, their insurance doesn't cover a certain vaccine or some set of vaccines. And then if they have medical assistance, they can come to us and we can vaccinate them. We also have the underinsured adult vaccine program. And that program is where we can immunize any underinsured adult with the adult vaccines. That program, this year for the first time, we were allotted a certain amount of money as was every county in the state, was allotted a certain amount because they're so short of money in that program. And so, you know, we've already spent our allocation for the year, and the year doesn't start again until October 1st. So right now, we can't get any more adult vaccine, except they are going to continue to provide us with varicella, MMR, COVID, and TDA. So those are the only vaccines now that we can offer to adults because we're out of money. And I don't think it's going to be any better next year. So...
We've also added a vaccination clinic time to accommodate the increasing need. If you look on page seven, you can see also our number of vaccinations that we've been given has also dramatically increased. We did 924 in 2023, and we're on target to exceed probably about 1,000 if it stays consistent between now and then. And in order to, I mean, obviously, we need more time if we're giving out more vaccines. So we've added a clinic.
Okay, can we go to page 10, please? So this data looks at referrals of refugees for health assessments. And is it correct that public health is required to help link them to a clinic in 90 days? Is that the requirement?
The requirement is that they have their health assessment completed within 90 days of arrival.
Okay, thank you. And so I wonder, Lisa, maybe from like a director level, if you could just very quickly explain the difference between a refugee and an immigrant? And then Marie, I got a follow-up question for you.
I'm going to...
So you have to apply. Refugees typically are people that are displaced from their country of origin due to civil distress, war, things like that. Then they can apply to come to the States as a refugee. Now, that's all run by the federal government. The federal government determines at the beginning of the fiscal year for which refugees, I believe, is September 1st. They look and project and say that this is how many refugees we're going to have this year. And they, you know, they stick to that number. And then, so then the refugees are done. I don't know how they choose which ones from where, but that's how the refugees come to us. We know that they're coming ahead of time, or the state does, and that they let us know. All of the refugees qualify for a set of benefits called the Refugee Health Benefits. Those benefits include medical assistance. It used to be six months. I think they have it now for a year. And then they work with a resettlement agency that helps them with housing, furnishing their house, helping them find jobs, transportation, things like that. They help them get settled. So that's a refugee. The Department of Health sends us, like I said, those refugees so that we have those names and we know, you know, a lot about them because they all have a refugee health exam prior to coming. And then once they come, then we do their refugee health assessment, or health, sorry, help schedule them for a refugee health assessment with a clinic.
Okay.
The immigrants, they apply through immigration to resettle in the United States. Immigrants are not eligible for those refugee health benefits. So in fact, they are not eligible to apply for medical assistance. They can apply for Minnesota Care, but they can't apply for medical assistance. They're not eligible for that. There's a timeframe that they have to be here and things like that before they can apply and be eligible for medical assistance. So immigrants, there's, they do have some health things that they have to do prior to coming over here. And where we get involved with immigrants is only if they come over here with a Class B, meaning there's something from their overseas exam that is a little funky for TB. So they maybe had an abnormal chest X-ray, they maybe had some TB symptoms. And so before they can come over, then they have to do some further testing. And then when they come to us, we get them because we then get them connected with a clinic that can complete the exam for, to rule out active TB. And then if they're latent, then we help them with treatment.
Okay. And our goal is to make sure that they get their assessment done within 90 days and also connect them to, like, help them find a medical home so we don't continue their care.
Sure. So then Marie, is there, are there, like, looking at this Class B refugees? So these are people that have TB or have some high risk for TB. Is there some prioritization as you are working in refugee communities for those Class B individuals?
Yes, those are people that, when I see them referred to us, we immediately take a look at them, contact those clients, and prioritize those in getting them into the clinic for their assessment, their blood test, their chest X-ray, that kind of thing. And then typically, we're talking to the whole family because a lot of our refugees and Class Bs are coming as part of the family, just to ensure the safety and health of the family.
People around them? Okay, thanks.
One of the complications that we've found, being, having so many of refugee health assessments needed, we ran out of clinics that had space to take them, and Jody has worked with a new clinic, Arise, I think it is. We had to find another location because it was taking more than 90 days to get them in, and we just didn't have enough providers in Scott County to see these folks. So now, we've been really lucky to have a, find a new partnership versus us trying to do that on our own.
So going back to the water testing a little bit, had some questions about, as I understand, the well tests here that you're talking about are all private wells?
Mm-hmm.
And if they do test positive for some of these resources or some of these particular problems, what kinds of things do we do to help the residents with that? If they get a test, do we get actively involved in this? Or is this just information that they then have to kind of work through the system to figure out what to do to improve their water quality?
Yep. So it's, we don't really offer any, like, mitigation. We've applied for grants and stuff like that to try and, well, have the ability to do something. But as of right now, we just, we're just the messenger, we're just letting them know that they're high, and then we can kind of give them, steer them in the right direction, whether it's the Department of Health or just like regular things, like a reverse osmosis machine or filters or anything like that that can mitigate that specific contaminant that they tested positive for.
Lisa, or someone, I'm not sure. Earlier, someone spoke to the fact that early childhood screenings were no longer being completed, and you know that's been a priority for this board. So like, in the alternative, what is happening with that?
Well, just to clarify, we're not completing full early childhood screenings on site right now because we don't have nursing available. However, in July and I think a couple days in August, our child and teen checkup coordinator, we're partnering with Shakopee School District, and they'll be going over to the school district to do the screenings there because they were short a nurse. And this is also enabling them to add some early childhood screening days for the kids that already had appointment and were able to make appointments. We are doing, because we have prevention staff, we are doing a big push to do a lot of outreach. We've been connecting a lot of kids to early childhood screens. The data is showing that bulk of the kids that are making appointments are hearing about it from public health. So we are still doing the outreach and the connection with the school district and getting kids to where they need to be and getting them in for the early childhood screening. So that work is still happening. The only thing that we're not able to do right now because of lack of staff is the actual full early childhood screening.
Okay, thank you for that clarifier. All right. Is there one additional question from the facilitators?
I was just going to ask a question regarding your next steps that you've documented in your summary. You've talked a little bit about what you've been doing with the refugee health assessments and partnering, but you also mentioned some collaboration with River Valley and some collaboration potentially with Coordinated Response. Do you want to speak to what you're thinking of in terms of the future of this program?
As far as River Valley, for those who don't know, River Valley Health Center is now part of the CAP Agency. They're less than, they're about a mile away. They now have physicians there as well. If we do pull back on some of our Health Matters Clinics, it's likely that we'll refer some of our clients over there. And we'll see, we'll see if that is a possibility of, because we really want to ensure that our clients have a place to go and have a healthcare home. And these are typically ones that have, like, absolutely no insurance. 99% of the thing, I think, our clients are uninsured and a couple are underinsured. So if River Valley can pick up that, we may take a look at some future discussion on if they can maybe fill that gap on a, on a long-term basis. We also have the opportunity to partner with Open Door. They have been coming, well, they're supposed to be here twice a month and provide medical services. So taking a look at through partnerships, how can we fill this gap? And do we need to continue even, continuing with the Health Matters Clinic? The other piece, the Coordinated Response Team, I would kind of want to take a look at if this is a possibility to improve the service that we're already delivering, taking a look at how can we help some of our, particularly the hoarding cases with their mental health issues so we don't have, I mean, it's for us so we can not come back month after month. I still have cases from three or four years ago that are unresolved on the inside, but it doesn't rise to a public health nuisance. But in one, for example, in one situation, they aren't able to live in the home, they're living in a hotel because their home is uninhabitable. And how can I maybe tie in some mental health resources for that family? Because it's technically not a public health nuisance anymore because it's only impacting that family. So looking at different ways of doing things and basically improving our service so they will rely less on public health. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
No.
All right. Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, these folks are on their way out to deal with the new TB cases, so I told them we would keep this briefer this morning. So I'd like to stop at this point and give it back to the board.
Thank you very much. Yes, colleagues, any questions on the topic?
I was just going to ask about the water testing. You know, there's that water plant going out there in Alcoa in the market?
Mm-hmm.
You've heard about that?
Yes.
Anyhow, there was a lot of testing that was done around that. Could that explain some of the numbers or?
What kind of testing?
Wasn't there, was there a lot of testing out there for, wasn't there some well clinics or something? Oh, thank you, Tracy.
So as part of the request for the, no, still can't?
No, maybe come up to the somewhere. There we go.
So as part of the request for that water supply well for the city and for the possible water bottling company, the DNR required a pump-out test, which is a test on the aquifer's capability to provide that water. And then some of, I saw a Star Tribune article, I didn't hear this myself, but I saw the article that some homes had some problems, and that was more sediment that they were finding in their home and a few other things that were changing the color of the water. So none of those homeowners that were having trouble requested a kit from the county. They were working directly with the city and the DNR.
I see, okay. And that sediment in the water, is that, even I have, I'm on a well, I have that from time to time. Is that common?
Yes, from time to time, you might get sediment in your well. An older pump might be causing the problem. So the best thing to do is to call your pumper, or I'm sorry, not your, your well driller, your well driller, and see what's causing the sediment in your, in your water.
Okay.
Also, we also have a lot of mineral in our water, so it could be sediment, or you could be getting, you have hard water here in Scott County, so you could be seeing some of that, too.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I've got one. And I thank you for that definition of the whole asylum seeker and refugee, because I feel like we had a workshop about three, four, five, six years ago. So all refugees start out as asylum seekers, if that's the right term, but they don't, not all asylum seekers make it to that refugee status. Is that, and we're not in charge of that status?
Yeah, no, we're not in charge of that. I'm not really sure if they start off as asylum seekers.
Well, however, they're entering the system.
They're, they've been displaced and are moved to what's called the refugee camp. But yeah, refugee, that's just, that's the term the federal government gives them, and this is what it means. You know, they get this for the first six months or a year that they come here, and so that's...
Because I'm trying to remember back in the day, which wasn't that long ago, but the border crisis, whatever, is it a direct correlation of that or not necessarily because it's a completely different?
It's, yeah. I mean, if you're just on the border crisis with Mexico or just in general?
Well, that's the one specifically, yes. I mean, since, of course, the northern border, but yeah.
So those are, those are asylum seekers. They're not refugees. And there's, they won't be, you know, labeled as refugees. They don't fit the criteria as refugees. They are asylum seekers, which has some very similar, you know, their concern of their safety, so they're seeking asylum in the United States or in another country. And they have different criteria. So most asylum seekers are not eligible for refugee benefits, although they have designated some countries that they can get refugee benefits. Like Haiti, we've had... Like Haiti, we've had a couple asylees from Haiti that received, they can get refugee health benefits. And they're not refugees, but they can get those benefits. So it's gotten so complicated. I have to refer back to the table constantly to see, okay, does this one get, does this one not? So it's really gotten convoluted and hard, because then, of course, you throw in the humanitarian parolees, too, because that's the other, like, all of our Ukrainians are humanitarian parolees, they're not refugees, they're not asylees, they're parolees, so.
That's a workshop maybe for another day. But the TB tends to kind of correlate to, as the refugee status, or not necessarily?
So, I mean, not necessarily. So the majority of TB is foreign, however, since I've been here, I know we had one gentleman that was not foreign-born. Some of our current cases are not foreign-born. There's some tied to travel, but they're not, they were born in the U.S. So, so, yeah, it's not a direct correlation. Like I said, the refugees are all tested before they come, they're tested when they get here. We hopefully can convince them, and with good education, that they should, if they do come up as a positive IGR, the blood test for TB, that they get treated for latent tuberculosis to prevent futuristically developing TB.
And that is incredibly labor-intensive, and the video portion seems to be working well. I know we just talked about that not that long ago, but the number of visits that's cut down, I mean, virtual visits seems to be working?
It certainly helps with the timing. Now, it does concern me sometimes that we're, you know, that, for some of, you know, like, I think of a couple of them that we have right now that are elderly, you know, their liver function studies are elevated, you know, are we, are we having to see them on video too much? Should we be in the home and looking at them in the eyeballs because we want to see if there's any yellowing going on? And that can be harder to see over a video. So that does concern me, you know, that maybe we are relying too heavily on video DMTs. But at this point in time, we seem to be doing okay.
Good to know. Well, with no other questions, and we wanted to keep it to seven, not eight or nine, or so we want to get you out of the field. Okay, I was trying to be hopeful and wishful and all those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the good work. All right, we are going to move on to item number nine, committee reports and commissioner updates. I'll start to my right with Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The MESB, Metro Poly and Urban Services Board met.
Looking at a small increase there because of costs going up on a number of things, including employees. On the 11th, Alcoa in the Market, I was online for that meeting, kind of quiet there, a couple little building things going on. Spring Lake Township met that same evening, attended that. They have a few little things with some roads and some drainage. Also got a nice report from Christian about Prior Lake, Spring Lake watershed district, so a lot going on there with flooding and a lot of water, so funny what a year difference makes. And then Credit River met last night for their twice-monthly meeting, and they just, a few things going, they're going to hire a finance person or something, so anyhow, that's my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
Thank you. It's kind of quiet in July for meetings, so a lot of them were canceled. I had attended the grand opening for the Community Land Trust Homes in Prior Lake on June 9th. I had a meeting with Mayor Janet Williams of Savage, she wanted to talk about libraries in the Historical Society. June 11th, I also had a meeting with Jen Schultz to get an update on the library before our meeting today. On June 12th, I had my monthly meeting with Leslie Vermillion. And I've also attended two media interviews regarding the Fitness Court at Sina Kites in Shakopee, and it's for the Fitness Court and for the Edible Gardens. Thank you for, to Lisa Bradsky for helping me with that, and also Amanda McKnight with the City of Shakopee to keep things kind of flowing well and keeping me calm and, so, so their grand opening for that Fitness Court is today at 11:30, if anybody would like to attend that. That's all I have today.
The real question is, are you now TikTok famous? Are you now an influencer with all your media?
No.
No? Well, you never know, we haven't checked the phone since we've been on this meeting, so, thank you very much. Commissioner Ulrich?
On the 10th, I had a meeting with Leslie Vermillion, our monthly meeting. On that same day, I met with Mayor Williams about County Road 27. We're going to have a follow-up meeting with Mayor Williams and the Administrator, our bi-monthly meeting coming up on Thursday. We'll obviously be talking about a variety of subjects, County Road 27 probably being a number one. There does seem to be mixed opinion on County Road 27. When I actually was on the city council and then newly elected, we were wanting to put County Road 27 over the Fenn, the bridge, and my recollection, I know they're searching for the denial letter, but it basically, in my memory, said, it's no for now, fix what's on Highway 13 and probably County Road 21, then come back to us. That Fenn is tremendously degraded, it was very degraded back in the late 90s, it's, it's no better, probably worse now, although I don't know, like, as a scientist if that's true, but, but it's been, you know, it's not spongy like it used to be, you know, it's, it's really not very vibrant. So that, the Fenn probably should be reduced to a lot of issue, I think, right away, and what some want to put in the immediate area of County Road 27 is probably more of an issue now than ever was back then, but we'll work through that, we'll talk about it. On the 11th, 169 Corridor Commission Executive Committee, and they've sent out a survey to all the jurisdictions, counties, cities, townships along the corridor from Mankato to north, you know, probably up to 494 at least, and beyond, probably Highway 55, and gotten back a lot of feedback on projects, potential projects, and they're going through a prioritization and scoring process for these projects. And so that will give the corridor coalition a lot of guidance in what they might ask for or lobby for in the future. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Can I just ask, Commissioner Ulrich, will that be a two- or four-lane road going through 27?
Double stacker. You heard it here, they're going to work it out.
I think it's six.
Or six, huh?
Whoa.
That's a joke, sorry. As long as I made that dumb joke, I was going to say that I invited a former commissioner here to come and have lunch at the Edible Garden, but he doesn't seem to be interested.
So, Mr. Chairman, the study actually shows that there's a need for six kind of arterial connections between 16 and trunk highway 13. So they've actually modeled a two-lane road and a four-lane road. So they own, you know, an easement on the north there coming off of the, or on the south end of it, coming off of where the fire department is there at Savage. But there's also an easement along Fabcon's West Property Line that is owned for a roadway as well. So I think that's part of the discussion that our staff are having with the city, is what are those impacts? Because you really don't want to run the arterial traffic through their downtown, right? As they're trying to develop that, you want to enable the folks that want to get there to get there, but not running commuter traffic or people that want to get to 169 or 35. So that's, I think, the analysis going on right now.
Can I ask, who owns that Fenn area? Is that, is there an ownership, or is that just DNR?
So the DNR owns a portion of the Fenn either side of where Fabcon owns some property, which then touches that the easement that the city owns for County Highway 27.
Nice, okay. Good question. Thank you for the clarification on that. On the 9th, I too toured the Land Trust Townhomes, a lot of good hands on the pie there. I know the SMSC was involved, Habitat for Humanity was involved, CDA was involved, so a lot of people trying to come together to have some answers to the housing crunch. Really nice properties, I think I saw you drive, I know you were there, I was waving feverishly as you drove. Nice piece of property. The 10th, MESB, as was talked about, with Commissioner Wolf, and then we also attended the library workshop this morning, so that concludes my report. Now, looking down to my left, County Administrator Vermillion?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple reminders on meetings we have coming up on a typical off-board day. Next Monday at 4 o'clock, we have the kind of public input in providing you information on what they've heard about the WMO plan that is being updated. And then on Tuesday, we have a work session here at the courthouse at 10 o'clock, and then you have the ribbon cutting for Cedar Lake and the camper cabins in that park out there, which is a pretty exciting thing at 2:30 next Tuesday.
Who overnight's first there? Is that, is there reservations? That's going to be, that's going to be a really nice spot.
You guys are going to race to see who can hit the button when it opens up?
Yes, yes, that's going to be, it's a great amenity to an already-crowned jewel. Thank you for the report. Looking down to my right, any notes of news down that way?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we have nothing to discuss today.
We love that. All right, now, we are looking at item number 12. Since we had our workshop already this morning, there are no workshops scheduled post.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion and second, and discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned, thank you.